Ron, are you ready to start the meeting?
I am ready. Are we almost here to 6:30? Okay, I was looking at the other clock. So sorry about that. It's three minutes behind. So we're good. Okay, do we have everybody on?
We do.
Charlie, hello?
Good evening, Mayor.
How are you?
I am good tonight.
Well, that's very good. We've had a long afternoon of some seminar meetings and so we're ready to get going again. So with that, I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for the Town of Waxall, the regularly meeting on June 9th, 2020, 6:30 PM. I heard that little snap there. Somebody did that snap for me. So at this point, if you would join me and stand for the seminar opening, then right after that, I will have the town clerk say a little bit about the procedures here. So if we stand and do the pledge allegiance and stand for a moment. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. All right. Thank you, everyone. Okay, if I could have Town Clerk Schuler read into the record some of the policies and procedures that we're following tonight and some of the order, if you would.
Absolutely. Yes, I'd be happy to. So I just wanted to review a couple logistics with regards to Zoom and to help any participants who are not familiar with it understand where some of their main controls are. These controls are your audio and video controls. They are located on the lower left-hand side of your computer screen. Please make sure to keep yourself muted when you're not talking and to keep your video on as we are streaming live to YouTube. And then with regards to board members and their interactions during this meeting, the mayor will be calling on each board member individually to provide comments and votes. As a reminder, when you're making a motion, if you would please state your name. If you would like to speak at any point, just make sure to raise your hand during some of the presentations. You may not be seen, so feel free to speak up. And if you have any technical difficulties, please do text me so that we can suspend the discussion. So next, we just need to do the roll call. I'll call on each board member individually. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan.
President.
Commissioner Tracy Westlick.
President.
Commissioner Pedro Maury.
President.
Commissioner Ann Simpson.
President.
Okay. Thank you all. We have everyone here.
Great. Thank you, Melody. And again, those are on the screen. If you're using a virtual background, again, just remember that you might not be able to see your hand if it's back behind the plane of your face. So again, bring that forward or feel free to shout out if you can. Okay, with that, I'd like to ask, we're talking about the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda that anybody is requesting? Being none on that. I'm looking for a motion for the adoption of tonight's agenda. Salute. Very good. Any discussion? Okay, with that, roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. So the agenda is adopted as proposed. And so at this time, I'd like to go into the public comments on items that are on this agenda. Town Clerk Schuler, do we have anybody tonight?
No, we do not. Not for this session, but for the general session.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, well, that, we're going to move down to the consent agenda. At this point, entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Salute. Very good. Now with that, roll call vote again, please. Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. So tonight's consent agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you very much on that. There are no recognitions that I'm aware of tonight for presentations. We move down to the public hearings. And so at this time, I'd like to open the public hearings and would like a motion for that, please. All right, don't need a motion on that again. I'm sorry. At this point.
No, you do.
You do need a motion.
Yes.
There we go. All right. So again, we'll go back up a little bit and entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Salute.
Very good. Motion to open up the public hearings. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Very good. Manus, let's open it up. Let's go for it. Right now, we have our presentation from our town manager, Jeff Wells. Jeff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening.
You will make sure we have control of the screen here. There we go. Looks like we do. So we are now in the home stretch of the budgeting process for fiscal year 2021. Tonight is the public hearing, and then after tonight, we have one more step to go. The board had an in-depth review and analysis of the budget at our budget workshop in May. And so what I'll do tonight for the board and for anybody else that is watching out there is just do a high-level kind of a 30,000-feet view of the budget in general and what we're trying to accomplish this year with this budget document. So a few general notes. Right off the top, there will be no change in the tax rate in this budget. It will remain at 38 and a half cents. We do, however, have concerns with our other revenue sources outside of our property, real property and personal property tax rate. That those other revenue sources can be anything from sales tax revenue to permits and plan review revenue that we get on a regular basis here, franchise tax fees, and you'll see how we've compensated for that in the overall budget document. But because of those concerns, we are looking to be more conservative in our expectations overall for our town revenues. And what that results in for this budget year is what I would say is a primarily operational budget, not exclusively, but a primarily operational budget. What you won't see in this budget is as many capital projects or capital equipment purchases or things like that that we would normally have in a normal budget year, since we have those reduced revenues. We have to be more conservative in providing those type of projects. And hopefully, by the end of, by the end of the calendar year, we can look at where we are and we hope to be a little bit better off than expected, but we have to plan accordingly in case that the revenue streams do fall short, like many anticipate that it will. So here is the overall budget, the 2019-20 budget, which we're now in the last month of. The total budget for the year was $15.5 million. And the new 2020-21 budget would be $13.5 million. So that is an overall reduction of $2 million. Roughly half of that is in the general fund, so that is close to $1 million. And that's where most of our operational funds come from. But as you can see here, all but one fund, we are expecting a significant, in most cases, a significant reduction in revenue for this upcoming fiscal year. So specifically highlighting some of our revenue sources, and in this case, the general fund. We actually did have an increase in our real and personal property tax revenue, and this is, of course, based on all of the housing that is being built in Waxall right now. We are looking at a 3.5% increase. And so that total tax would be $7,535,000. And of course, everybody that's buying houses has to park vehicles at these houses. And so that, we're looking at a little bit more of an increase of 5%. After that, though, our other revenue streams, sales and use tax, 35% decrease, franchise taxes, a 28% decrease, interest on our earnings, 43% decrease, and other revenues, 27% decrease. And how we figure those numbers is through some guidance with the state. They give some projections out, but then we also have to look at our actual numbers and try to make conservative estimates from those numbers. Overall, that comes to a 9% decrease in the overall general fund revenue, which we're anticipating at $10,915,000 this upcoming budget year. As far as the departmental expenditures, these are the overall expenditures. Many of the departments have decreased expenditure lines, but a few of them are increased for various reasons. For instance, the admin budget at $979,600 is increased because we incorporated the clerk budget back into the admin budget. Information technology is higher this year because we incorporated a lot of the computer software and phone system and technology expenditures that were defrayed across all departments are now in the information technology budget. Human resources is adding a position, actually moving a position back into human resources. And so those are examples of a few of the departments that have gone up, but most of the departments do have a reduction in the upcoming budget. As far as some of the highlights, the major expenditures, we are going to be going into an agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for a phased vehicle lease program. And what this will be designed to do is to fully replace our fleet over a five-year period. The first year, we will look to replace all of our vehicles that are over 10 years old. And that will be a cost of roughly $60,000 to lease these vehicles. But for budgetary purposes, we are implementing that midway through the year to help with the initial costs of that. There will also be, with all these vehicles that are the police vehicles, there's an upfront cost to equip those in the light bar, in all the stuff that goes with equipping the police vehicles to properly do their job. And what this will do is it'll modernize our fleet and it'll keep all of our vehicles that we operate in much better maintenance shape going forward. And the Enterprise Fleet Management program will, I think, be beneficial to the town and also save our taxpayers a lot of money over time. And we'll have a more modern fleet to show for it, which is, I think, a great thing for the town. We'll have a modest increase to our solid waste contract. That'll be $1.4 million. We are continuing, as I said, to keep building a substantial amount of houses, and so we have to continue to serve that accordingly. We didn't spend all of that budget line item. Don't anticipate spending all of that in this year's budget. So I think we had a little bit of wiggle room there, but we did adjust that up accordingly to match what we feel that cost will be. There'll also be a continued $25,000 contribution to the Waxall Fire Department as in previous years. And then the one item that the board asked to program into the budget at the workshop will be upgrading our town website with the estimated cost of that being $30,000. We'll continue our lease on the town hall building. The total cost is $120,000, which 110,000 of that comes within our general fund budget. And we also take a portion of that out of our building inspections fund at $10,000. We'll continue to pay the debt for our outfit of our police department building. That totals $526,700, with that loan scheduled to be paid off later on this decade. And we are also going to be, after the budget process, researching opportunities that we can reduce the interest costs, which do come to over $100,000 each year as we continue to pay down this debt. Once streetlights get turned over to the town, then we have to pay that bill. And we come in with $216,000 expected for that expense this year. The police department found a great program where they can defray the cost of equipping themselves the body cameras over a five-year period. This first-year cost will be $44,000. Unfortunately, we were not able to program in summertime events for the Parks and Recreation Budget, and this was directly attributed to COVID-19 difficulties. We're still in the phased reopening of the state. It's very difficult to plan events when you don't necessarily know when the state will be completely open again, what type of gathering requirements there will be. Many of these events take months to plan, and so we hope that we can pick up these event schedules again, starting in September. But that will still be tentative, of course, based on how the reopening of the state continues to go through the governor's office. We consolidated costs, specifically our workers' comp and liability insurance that used to be defrayed across all departments. We moved all of that into our admin budget, cost for phones and stipends. I mentioned phones a little bit earlier. We consolidated the cost of the phones into our IT budget, as well as stipends into our human resources budget. And we also moved all of the costs for computer hardware and software into our information technology budget. It's a lot easier to keep up with administratively doing this and just made good sense to us to make that move. On the staffing side, total number of staff positions that were budgeted, 71. This is a net increase of one new position. It adds a full-time position in the administration budget, specifically a deputy clerk. It adds a full-time position in the police department, a patrol officer. And that officer will be scheduled to start on January 1st, 2021. That was to help with the budget, balancing the budget this time as well. The planning technician position, which is currently vacant, was one of the positions that has been removed, and that reduces the total personnel of the planning department from six to five. And another move in the planning department that we made is budgeted the planning director position for half the year, while I continue to serve in that dual role through at least the remainder of this calendar year. And that, of course, helped balance the budget as well. It allows for up to a 2% merit for staff. And as I mentioned before, the clerk budget was merged into the administration budget. Fee schedule changes, most of them very minor. So the one, I guess I would highlight as the most major would be adding a fee for a permanent street closure. This is a fee that we've not had in our budget before, and it actually, there is a significant cost to advertising for that type of request. And we do have public right-of-ways, some paper streets, so this is certainly a possibility moving forward. You have to advertise for that on several occasions in a local publication, so we needed to recoup that cost if that in particular item came along. So remaining steps to get to the finish line here, the budget document was made available for the public on our website or by appointment on May 22nd. Of course, we are having our public hearing tonight, and that had to be advertised 10 days prior to, which we did that. Public hearing is going on right now, and then two weeks from tonight, you would be able to adopt the budget. One thing to keep in mind as part of the new remote meetings laws is that when you do close the public hearing this evening, you still have to leave open, I guess, for 24 hours after the public hearing additional comment if it comes in. And with that, I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions that you have. I just want to reiterate how much of a joy it's been working on this document, even though it is a decreased document. It has been a pleasure to work with. Your staff worked really hard and really contributed when we needed to, to get these numbers where they needed to be. So I am just so proud of our staff in general, of our department heads, of Rosemary and Melody's help in putting this document together. It truly is a team effort. I'm very proud of it. And as I said before, hopefully, we can come back and revisit this document at the end of the calendar year, and the numbers will be better than we think. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I just have one question. Jeff, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. The police department has found funding, a grant, those body cameras?
They have applied for a grant for the body cameras. Yes, so the hope is that we'll be able to recoup some of that cost back through a grant.
Thank you.
One more. Commissioner Simpson.
Jeff, I just want to thank you and the rest of the team and the staff for putting this together. I know it's kind of done in short notice. You guys did a fantastic job. The other question I had is, and this might be more for Melody, is that after, we have 24 hours to allow public comments, how do we read those at our next meeting to enter them into the record, or how will they be?
What I could do is distribute it to the board once received, I'd say, at the end of the 24-hour period, and then incorporate it into the record as an attachment. So Charlie, in terms of the motion to close the hearing, what would that look like?
We would still close the hearing tonight, but the public still has, because of the state of emergency situation, 24 hours to submit their comment.
Very good.
Great. Thank you.
We're good. Thank you for that. Any other comments by board members? Very good. Jeff, you did a great job with your team, putting everybody together. They worked really, really hard in getting this done in spite of several obstacles in our way with changes in, you know, auditing firms and things like that. The guys still pulled it all together. And it's not, certainly, we understand that there could be some significant changes coming our way due to the COVID issues, but we'll work through that as well. So I commend you and the team and the entire staff for helping us get through this thing. Commend the commissioners for doing their homework way out front and make sure that we all comb through this document line item by line item and gave significant contributions back to it. So kudos to you. Appreciate it, Jeff. Thank you very much.
Mayor, we have, right now, Tracy is not showing. She's showing as a participant, but...
She just...
She said not all the images are loading.
Okay, she just texted me that she can hear us.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure that she's able to participate.
Right.
I did also want to note that at this time, yes.
Okay.
At this time, we have not received any public comments for this public hearing.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Okay, since, again, we're going to be adopting this budget on the next Board of Commissioners meeting, so at this point, if there are no other comments or questions from the board, I will ask for a motion to close this particular public hearing section.
Salute.
Very good. Thank you. Roll call vote, please, if we can. Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Very good. With a little delay there, but we all got in. Thank you very much for that. Mayor, thank you. I just want to say thank you quickly to the mayor and the board for all of your support on this document. It is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your guidance. You are very welcome. Thank you. All right, we'll jump down to the second public hearing part on this again. This is a public hearing on amendment to the Fire Prevention Code ordinance information. And so with that said, I'll be looking for a motion to open this section of this public hearing.
Salute.
Very good. We have a motion up. Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
And Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. We are open on this one, so this one's going to pass over to our fire marshal, Kevin Starnes. Welcome again to our party.
Well, say good evening, Mayor, and, all right, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, everybody as well. Long time no see. So I got just a little quick presentation we'll go through and talk about the proposed amendments to the Fire Prevention Code ordinance. So as you know, the position of fire marshal is somewhat new to the town. So in doing that, it kind of seemed fitting to update this ordinance. Make sure I got my... Jump down to the next slide here. It's not... There we go. So the way the ordinance currently reads, this is pretty much it as far as fire prevention. Basically, this ordinance was adopted in 2018. And all it really does is acknowledge that the town is abiding by the North Carolina Fire Prevention Code, that we adopt that code as our reference point. So there's really nothing in this current ordinance, no structure, no guidelines, other than just the adoption of the North Carolina Fire Code. There are a couple other ordinances that are related to the fire code, but are in different sections of the full code of ordinances for the town. One of those is the lockbox ordinance. It was amended in 2007. And basically, all it does is establish the Knox brand rapid entry system as the standard, which is also the standard for the entire county, for entire union county. So that's all it really does. It also establishes some criteria where the Knox boxes are required and also where Knox key switches and Knox padlocks are required. And for those of you that are unfamiliar, this, the lockbox ordinance is so that the fire department has a rapid entry for an emergency situation for either locked gates, electric gates, buildings with fire alarm sprinkler systems, things like that. If a building has a bunch of hazardous materials, things like that, just a way for us to get in the building without either breaking a door down or holding us up, trying to get in. So that's that ordinance. There's another related ordinance is the open burning ordinance. This is a little bit older ordinance, but it was last amended in 2010. So it's, right now, it's in the health and sanitation section of the Waxall Code of ordinances. And it really just establishes when and where you can burn, which pretty much, there is no really open burning. much you there is no really open burning unless it's for religious recreational purposes in the town. So and there's also it also establishes a burn permit, some guidelines for for a burn permit. So and and like I said, the open burning lockbox and the fire prevention ordinance, they're all in three different places in the full full section or full full code. So my amendments that I propose is repeal those three ordinances, how they're written currently and in their places now within the 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 town ordinance. And with doing that, add those back in to a full one pale one document or one one code. So also propose we add some sections and within that code that that outline the applicability, enforcement permits, inspection frequency, violations, penalties that go along and and that line right with the North Carolina Fire Code. And adding the open burning and lockbox ordinance, just update some of the language. We're not really changing anything with it. We're just kind of updating some of the requirements, nothing nothing too major really than that was already there. So when if doing that, and I think you you all have a copy of that proposed ordinance, but what that does, it's important to note that it does not, it doesn't exceed nor it is less nor it is it less restrictive than what the North Carolina Fire Code already what's already in the code. So there's nothing nothing that we want to do or want to to adopt that it's any more restrictive or anything like that. It's 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 more for administrative and a formality to just to add this into the code. So some of the benefits of doing this, it it puts all the fire prevention, fire code related topics into one ordinance without having to go different places to look for the same related type of information. It also adds more information for stakeholders, business owners, property owners, homeowners within the town, an easier place for them to go and look to see what what our our requirements are. And it also allows for a little bit more expansion if we need to add anything at a later time. It'll be there, we can just add it right right in with with the with the code. So my requested, what I like to to see is tonight, just a motion to close the the public hearing and then on the next meeting either adopt it as written or adopt it with any any more amendments to it. So like I said, that was a that was short. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to it. If you guys have any questions, feel free.
Commissioner Morey?
Quick question. So we have somewhat of an ordinance and then we just follow with the county as as far as their fire prevention goes?
It's not really the county. It's when the town took over all code enforcement for building, fire, mechanical plumbing, all those, we we adopted everything, we had to do everything separate. So everything that we are all of our codes, the the county does also follow, but it's not the county's code, it's the state fire code. So we we both enforce the same code within the state, but it's not, it's not just our code or Union County's code, it's the state fire code.
Okay, so Waxall itself doesn't have its own code?
No, no, it does not.
Would you see a benefit for us to have our own code or for more flexibility or more stringent rules?
We we really can't, we have to follow the North Carolina Fire Code. That's the adopted code by general statute for the whole state. Now, we can, we can have our own amendments and our own requirements for certain things that the the lockbox code that's already currently adopted is is technically a it an offshoot sort of from the fire code. The fire code just requires lockboxes. Our our ordinance sets forth the actual requirements or where those those boxes would be required and also what type of boxes are to be used. So you can do that way or we can go more restrictive with anything. So if so if we see an issue where where we might need to to do our own have our own ordinance that 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 the North Carolina Code doesn't doesn't specifically point out or is more, I guess, more liberal on on that topic, we can go more restrictive. We just can't go less restrictive on anything that's in the North Carolina Fire Code.
Right, that's that's pretty much the case with with any law, but I guess my question at the end of the day is, would you see a benefit for us to adopt our own code, obviously following, you know, the state code, but setting it in place so that if we should need something more strict or just something a little bit more well defined, would you think that that's?
We could in the future. I think the idea to when the town has, when the fire department is under the town's umbrella, that may be a good time to to have a full, a more full fire code. The way we're the way I propose we we're doing with this with this these amendments, it kind of sets that up to be able to add to it and make its own fire code. But yeah, it it could definitely be done. I do see a benefit in that.
Great, thank you.
I have a I have a quick question just for the benefit of some of those that might be watching online as well, but not able to be here tonight. Kind of backing up a little bit towards the the we'll call it recreational fires and things like that. Of course, a lot of us have fire pits in our backyards and what's changed there? I see a little bit of a notation. What's changed?
Nothing really has changed. The only thing that was added that I that that wasn't in that before was the North Carolina Fire Code restricts or or the definition for recreational fire is three feet by three feet by three feet. So basically a fire bowl or fire pit size. So I did add that in there just for reference, so that so that would be in the in the ordinance. So if anybody wants to have a fire, they or a recreational fire, bonfire, they can go right to that and they know the actual size limits. That would be the only real change to that to that ordinance how it is now.
What I've noticed on some of the fire pits are generally getting larger in size as they're being manufactured over time. And so, you know, three foot is one. I know some of the kits over at the Lowe's or whatever, they describe them as 43 inches. You know, is that inside diameter, outside diameter with the materials? And so how do we address that or should we, you know, what should we do on that?
Well, the the fire code is 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 pretty clear on the the size for recreational fire and that wouldn't be the the apparatus that the the fire is in, it would be the actual fire itself.
I see.
So so yeah, so so you could have a larger fire pit, but as long as that fire inside the that pit is is three by three.
Okay, that helps out with the definition. I'm sure a lot of people who just bought one are going, oh, my goodness, I'm seven inches over this, so.
Yeah, and that's a good point. That's something we might maybe should change the language to that one line just specifically to the to the fire itself and not the the apparatus. That might be something worth making a change over.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions? The fire marshal. Very good. Kevin, thank you very much for that. We're looking to move that forward next time out. So appreciate your presentation and if there's no other further questions, I will ask Melody. I saw you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that we have not received any public comments related to this public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, again, with that, I will ask for then a motion to close this portion of this public hearing. Salute. Very good. We have a motion to close the public hearing of this matter. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tim McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlock?
Aye.
Still there. Commissioner Morey?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much for that. Kind of lost the commissioner's picture there for a moment, but you're still with us. Okay, at this point in time, we're going to move down past new business, old business, new business, and now we're going to go to the general public comments. Tom Clark Schuler, if you would walk us through that part.
Certainly, yes. So we have received a public comment related to general comments, so I'm pulling it up right now. And this comment is received by or from Jan Gapper. She lives at 4101 Spreading Oaks Court and her comments are as follows. As a Waxall resident of 18 years, I strongly believe that our town and its leaders must openly respond to the Black Lives Matter movement in a timely manner. Let us not be silent about racism in our town or complicit in ignoring racism. Mayor Pappas, Mayor Pro Tim McMillan, Board of Commissioners, Maury Simpson, Westlock and Town Manager Jeffrey Wells, you are uniquely positioned to introduce common sense limits on police use of force in the town of Waxall. While the majority of Waxall citizens may believe that our town holds no ill will towards blacks and that our town is peaceful, thus requiring no action, I know as a white woman, we are blind to our systemic racism. I urge you as leaders to educate yourselves, to seek out that education, to partner with our towns in unpackaging systemic racism in Waxall's town policies and culture. A solid starting place is to read Peggy McIntosh's List of 50 Daily Effects of White Privilege and then she provides the link. Mayor Juan Pappas, I urge you with the board's encouragement to take the mayor's pledge. She provides another link. There you will find particular guidance to realize Waxall's vision as a friendly, vibrant, prosperous town where history and creativity build an enduring, safe and healthy community for people of all ages to live, learn, work, play or grow a business. Therefore, in order to fulfill Waxall's mission, our town must be transparent, engaging all citizens so that Waxall will see full innovation. Included in the mayor's pledge are the following actions which will bring immediate action or immediate change and will be critical to commit to and implement in a timely manner. Review Waxall's police use of force policies. Engage our community by including a diverse range of input, experiences and stories in your review. Report the findings of your review to our community and seek feedback. Reform our community's police use of force policies. I welcome your response and will look forward to your leadership in bringing racial equality to our town. And that's the end of the comment.
Sorry about that. That has muted. Thank you for that. All right, at this point in time, we're going to move down to the town leadership reports. We'll start off again with our town manager, Jeff Wells. First, I gotta unmute. Yeah. There we go. We're getting used to this yet. Right. Just have two things this evening. We are still in the middle of Governor Cooper's phased reopening of the state. We're specifically in phase two and based on the the emergency operations call yesterday, the 4:00 PM call that the county does, we are up to 606 cases within the county with 354 that are no longer monitored. So we still have 252 active cases, currently reporting 22 deaths in the county. But I guess one thing to keep in mind as the average new number of cases per day in the county right now is at 20. So the it is still around. I just want to remind anybody that is out there listening that be mindful, be careful. The virus, the numbers still are increasing. Now, that certainly could be due to to several factors, including more testing, but certainly some of that probably is community spread as well. So let's all just be mindful and still remain to be safe and careful in our daily travels and daily interactions. Right now, phase two is scheduled to conclude close to the end of the month and so that will rapidly get here before you know it and we will find out whether we will be moving into phase three at the end of June. Secondly, the town made a formal request to Union County for ETJ for our donut holes back in the early spring and that request, as I understand, will be considered by the county commissioners coming up. Looks like tentatively at their July meeting, which is not a confirmed date yet. They typically have two meetings that month, but they're looking to probably consolidate that into one. And so once I find out that date, I will pass that along. I believe we will also be on the agenda with Marvin, who will be making a similar request as well, but we are looking forward to that and looking forward to hopefully get some positive consideration for several donut hole areas in our town that could certainly be, I think, best served by being part of our zoning subdivision and building inspection oversight. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. I have to unmute myself too here. So any additional questions for the town manager on what he just spoke about? Very good. Saying none, we're going to move over to Parks and Rec. Dina, you're on.
Hello.
Dina, I think you have to unmute.
There you go.
Did I? Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. The controls don't always like me. Good evening, everyone. We're going to go through some virtual programming and update on what's going on in the park system. And we're going to first off tell you what's going on this week. We have our celebration of all of our graduates this week, so we'll be celebrating them on Facebook as well as giving some suggestions of how to celebrate at home. At the end of the week, we're going to give some activities for welcome to summer, so that's making homemade ice cream to him doing the family picnic. So we're excited about giving those offerings to our citizens. Just for future, we're going to do continue virtual programming to the end of June, especially while we're in phase two. Hopefully in phase three, we will be able to open up to in-person programming, but we'll we'll wait to see what that looks like. Next week, we're going camping. So we have a full week of activities to do camp out at home. Also, Ms. Amy did a walking trail video to our suspension bridge. We have lots of new neighbors and we wanted to highlight one of our special places in Waxall. So she's going to do that video as coming up next week. We're also going to have awesome camp recipes for you to do at your outside camping activity plus how to do smores and awesome that Mr. Kevin gave the update on our outdoor fire pit, so we're going to all be safe on doing that. Something I would love to engage with the community is we love partnerships. I've said this a couple times and. Um I've said this a couple of times in past uh presentations. But we love to partner with our businesses, um our local artisans, our farmers, our gardeners. Um our health and wellness providers on future programmings and events. So that is, that could be virtual, that could be in person. Um but we would love for you to be engaged in Waxaw. Basically, we're looking for um innovators in our community that would love to partner with us to engage with our citizens. And um help grow our community. So we're, we're really excited. We already do that on a hundred percent basis right now. But we're looking for more engagement from the community to move forward. As Jeff said that we're in phase two right now with the reopening of the state. We have play responsible uh signage up to help um remind our citizens of um social distancing and. Clean hand sanitizing. Um so that helps just a fa- friendly reminder of what. What we need to be responsible for ourselves and our community. Um the second uh poster basically explains what's open and what's not right now. So all of our restrooms are open um and clean regularly. The picnic shelters are open, but have uh, we have limited some of the seating area. Um just because of social distancing. Um our fields have now reopened. Um the W A A. Is now back on the fields doing practices and camps. And they have their full guidelines on how they're um practicing all of our responsible play. Um and they're doing really well with that. So we're excited to have kids back playing again. Um again, we are at the size of twenty-five per group outside. So that's very limited. That's the reason why we're still doing the virtual programming um from this point until phase three. Any questions about that? Some new innovative things that are happening with the park system. We are going to receive new signs soon. Um that's going to update. So we'll have a visual for our rule base for all the ordinances we have for the town. Um and it's going to have some good location signs for our trail. Uh so that's, we're looking forward to that. And David G. Barnes restroom got a refresh recently. New paint, um everything's all scrubbed up and ready to go. New baby changing stations. So it looks really, really nice. It's a, we had that on the list to do and we were able to get that done before we opened up the um restrooms. And as always, I leave you with our vision and mission. And just want to say thank you for your support on our ever-changing uh life in Park and Rec. Um we, every day, something new comes out and we really appreciate um the board being behind us and helping us through all these changes. Any questions?
Very good across the board. Any questions for our Parks and Rec director? Dina, thank you for every week bringing some sunshine into our meetings that we have here. And I'm sure all the uh park users of all ages, I appreciate your efforts out there and probably pretty glad to get back outside a little bit. I know I am as well. We, we do practice the social distancing, but uh it's big enough park uh anywhere where we can do that. So appreciate that and sure everybody's happy with it. Any other questions uh for the parking recs uh director before we move on? Very good. Being uh no hands raised that I can see forward there. Dina, again, thank you very much for uh being here. I like your new screen, by the way. You're, you're.
Technology doesn't like me, so it, you know, it's, it's all good.
It's a good color, so that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um at this time, what I'd like to do is uh if there are any comments from the Board of Commissioners, you have the opportunity right now if you'd like to speak. So please let me know if that's the case. Very good. It's been uh, oh, there's your hand. We missed Mayor Pro Tim McMillan. See, that's why I say you got to pull it forward. Unmute yourself.
Okay. All right. Just a couple of brief things. Um and not so much comments as to uh what's been done in the meeting tonight. But the state that we are now lis- uh living in and things that have been uh transpiring around us. We are still in a pandemic, as our town manager said, so I hope everyone is being mindful of that. Um we have been in the midst of changes and protests and rallies, even here in the town of Waxaw. One that has been not so much a protest I didn't see, but more as I would think a coming together and a unity rally. Of high school students and young people and young adults to try and bring those of us. Who are not together together or to bring some awareness to people. So I just wanted to say a couple of quote uh quotes that I found from um a peaceful uh person who is no longer with us. And that is Dr. Martin Luther King, where he wrote, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort." What inconvenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. Darkness cannot drive out darkness as only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate as only love can do that. So with those two quotes from him, maybe it would be helpful if we tried to love our neighbor who doesn't look like us. Who doesn't think like us, who doesn't speak like us, who may not pray like we do. Who may not vote like we do, but to just love your neighbor without any exceptions. So this is going to come through time, education, and hopefully by people opening their hearts and just learning to educate themselves. And not judge people based upon how they look, but based upon who they are as a person. Here in the town of Waxaw, if we look around, even on this board, I'm the only person who looks like as I do. On our police department, there are no people who look like I do. In our town hall, there are no people who are employed who look like I do. So we need to educate ourselves and maybe look around and maybe try and change some of the scenery that we do see. And reach our hands out to everyone. Those who are qualified, I'm sure there are some, to bring them into our town and bring them into our fold. And bring them onto our police department, into our town hall, into our lives as people. And just remember that we all human beings of one race and that's the human race and learn to love with understanding.
Thank you, Brenda. Appreciate that. Very kind words. Excerpts of some of your uh talk there is from a very wise man. Sometimes uh probably taken too early, but uh we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any other comments uh by the commissioners at all? Okay, at this time, I see one late hand going up. Commissioner Maury, thank you.
My apologies. Uh I just want to make a, a, a kind of quick thank you to the uh Waxaw Police Department, uh our Parks and Recs and uh Department. Monroe Police Department and a few of the other agencies that uh came out to help during our event. Appreciate them greatly. Glad the event went well. And uh again, our, our, our great thanks.
Very good. Well, thank you. Yes, they did. Uh they did a good job of allowing a very, very uh peaceful gathering. And we're appreciative of that. So again, uh good job to everybody who participated. It was widespread. And uh we do, uh we are aware. So thank you very much. Right. Moving on forward, if there are no other comments on that, we have no closed session topic scheduled for tonight. So unless there's any last minute comments, I'm going to ask uh for a move to adjourn. So move.
So move.
Very good. We'll go around, roll call. Mayor Pro Tim McMillan.
Hi.
Commissioner Westlake.
Hi.
Commissioner Simpson.
Hi.
Commissioner Maury.
Hi.
Very good. We are so adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for gathering tonight. And it was a long afternoon for us a little bit. But uh we got a lot accomplished and we continue to get a lot accomplished. So I appreciate each and every one of you. So thank you very much.
We're gonna.
Have a good night.